The August 2019 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Ms. Morris?
Here.
Ms. Gattens?
Here.
Ms. Chairman?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Is there any remarks?
I have remarks, and I'm sorry if they sound repetitive. Mr. Walsh just said in his script that our job on the zoning board is to make favorable decisions, and today we have ten items on the agenda, and a majority of them aren't complete. So my guess is that either the people, the applicants, don't know that they have to prove, or they're just not being told, and I understand the condition that our Libs Department is in right now is a mess, so I understand you're totally overwhelmed. But this has been going on for months now, and I don't find it, I don't feel comfortable voting on anything anymore that doesn't have at least a drawn-out parking plan. We have one, two, three, four applications right here that don't have more than one front page, and if they do, it's, the second page is only the buddy neighbors, and we have doubled exposure pictures and pictures I can't even read. So maybe we can make a script, tell people, because it's, we're really not investigative reporters. It's, we're going over there looking at properties, having no idea what's happening there, and I understand, I totally understand your situation, and I don't want to, and it's not your fault, but...
Well, it's the applicant's responsibility to convince the board members of what they're asking for.
Exactly.
If they file an application, we're obligated to put them on the agenda.
Yep. But the problem is, is that they're not really telling us anything, because some of them I can't read, and some of them that, even their drawings are not one, are correct. I have, there's another one that says they want to put their house back to, it's old, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say what that was, so it's, we're going in like, we're just going in blind. So on record, I don't feel comfortable voting on anything that doesn't have a completely filled-out application. That's all.
Anyone else?
I can agree with Ms. Newcomb, because part of our job is we go out and look at these properties when we get the packet, and we usually have about a week before we, we get the packet, a week, maybe twelve days before. In a case like tonight, we have ten properties to look at, and when we get a property that has no parking drawing to show where, if you're looking to put an additional apartment in your building, you have to convince this board that you have the parking, and to come in here with nothing and expect us to just take what you're saying at that podium, I mean, we want to see the parking, we want to see where you are, what you're going to do. So I mean, it's tough tonight, we have ten applicants here. We'll take case by case and naturally go on its merit and what information was provided to us. But going forward, and I agree with Ms. Newcomb altogether on this, at this point here, I'm not going to vote for anything coming forth after tonight that isn't complete, because the onus falls on the applicant to do that. Thank you.
Don, the attestment and verifications of postings?
I do have an affidavit, a sworn affidavit that's part of the file that I did post each and every property.
Thank you. You call the first case?
First case is number one, Dennis Rodowitz, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, North Sumner Avenue, seeking a variance in order... Your mic is not on. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Dennis Rodowitz, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, North Sumner Avenue, seeking a variance in order to reopen a vacant address as a three-unit apartment building, R2 zone.
Yes. Attorney Dennis.
Is he going to be giving testimony?
Yes, if I can just give a quick summary of just what we're doing tonight. So first off, good evening. So we're here on the fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, North Sumner Ave, a variance request. This was continued from the last month to work on a detailed parking plan, which we did submit to the zoning office. I'm not sure if you have a copy, but I have copies here if you need them.
No, but we got copies, but we just literally got them when we walked in.
Oh, okay. So this is, this was a four unit as a non-conforming use. We lost the non-conforming use, and now we're applying for a variance for a three unit, just to summarize where we left off.
Just to add to, this was originally turned down for four units some months ago, and he's reapplied for three units.
So how many parking spots do we have?
There's four on the plan. We would have to increase the lot by approximately thirty by thirty area. It's another nine hundred square feet of impervious surface to the existing lot, to, as you can see on the plan, there's four spaces and a turnaround space for the car, the vehicles, so there's no risk of having them backing out onto the street or any other concern like that.
Yeah, man, maybe you want to explain, because I'm only seeing three spots on this plan, so...
Sure.
Maybe I'm not seeing something?
May I approach?
Sure.
Okay, yeah. I'll actually, I'll label them out. Yeah, the shaded area is the additional lot to be included, the additional pavement to be included.
Mm-hmm.
And then this area up top here that I just highlighted, that's the turnaround section.
So we're technically short a half a spot, is that correct, Dan?
That is correct.
Yes, and we would obviously request a variance. I do have parking variance as part of my application for the half-spot.
Why does that wall on the left-hand side of the property, the existing wall that's there, is, do we have a buffer showing there?
Yes, it is a retaining wall between the two properties along that side.
Is that the property line?
The wall is not the property line, no.
Retaining wall, is that the property line? Yes, and then it comes this way.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Not from there.
Okay.
If you want to speak, you can come up to the podium.
Jerry, why don't you come on up and get sworn in?
You raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Jerry Chazen, 106 Chapin Lane, Dalton, PA.
Thank you.
I, about five or six years ago, I put about forty-five thousand dollars into that property.
So the retaining wall here, the question was, is the retaining wall the actual property line with this adjacent property?
Yes, it actually abuts. However, on the other guy, he actually encroaches on me, because we had a surveyor there, he encroaches about a foot.
So what we're trying to find out, where's the property line? Is the wall the property line or not?
Yes, he has no, he has no space on the other side of that wall, that's the property line.
Well, that's not what the survey shows, though. The survey shows the solid black line as being the property line, so there would be space beyond the other, on the other side of the existing wall.
Correct, I stand corrected. So there is a small area there, according to the survey, of space on the other side of that retaining wall.
So what I'm trying to get at is, from the end of your parking space where it's going to be touching that wall, that retaining wall, to your property line, I'm looking to see how wide that area is. I don't see a measurement here.
Doesn't appear to be very wide, but...
So Dan, we're going to need a...
There's some, there's some space between the wall and the line.
It's about three inches at the most.
Three inches.
That I could see where the other guys, where, the other guy has a very old concrete something that's falling apart, and mine, between mine and his is about three inches. But when I had the survey done before I put the retaining wall, they said that he had actually come over about a foot in a different area, because it's a hundred and seventy-five feet long, so he had actually come over at one point. But that's before I bought the house. I bought it in '08.
Dan, so we're going to need a four-foot buffer here?
I'm sorry, did you speak to me?
Yes.
I'm talking, I'm sorry, I'm talking to the lawyer. So that's going to reduce, it's going to push them parking spots back.
Well, he almost can't put a four-foot buffer with the wall there.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever the distance between the wall and the property line is, basically is the most he could put as a buffer.
Right.
We would certainly request any, any variance for any setback, given the circumstances. Yeah, I, we worked with the engineer and the surveyor to really, you know, try hard to come up with this plan to get the four spaces and get a turnaround and not, you know, take up too much space. For the impervious surface, you'll see a lot of, a lot of land behind the lot, and we would be glad to work with the city engineer to ensure that there's proper drainage.
Well, I'm not concerned about, I'm concerned about that property owner, that house next to it. Normally we require a four-foot buffer from the property line, so your vehicle's lights aren't shining into their house or anything like that. And we're kind of a little hand-strung here with that retaining wall there, so I, I want to look at what we can do to prevent that neighbor from having a hardship.
But he's higher than that.
I'll wait.
The house is higher than that.
Right, if we could just explain, the, there is a, there is a, at least a three-foot retaining wall, and the house is set up.
The other house is high, just like this one.
So it's set up from the street, just like our property, so...
I know, I've been there numerous times, you've been here numerous times, so I should move in. We've been there so many times, so I know what the property looks like, but what I'm looking at is that neighbor next door. Naturally, we're here to protect you and your application, but we're also here to protect the neighbors around it. So my concern is, if you don't have that land for a buffer that's required, we've got to figure a way to get a buffer in there. I'm not trying to stop your project or from you selling that house, we're just trying to do it right.
I understand, but...
We're talking the left house or the right house?
Next to the, next to the parking lot.
Next to the parking lot. Okay, there's about eight feet between, there's about eight feet between where my property, where that retaining wall is, and the guy has started to build. I'm not understanding.
I'm looking at the property line that you, your engineers, nicely made a dark line right there. That's the property line we're going by. I don't care what this guy did in this house, or what he encroached, or anything, your engineers, your surveyors drew that line right there, and that's what I'm looking at. All right? So from that line, we require a four-foot buffer, so we're going to come back four feet into your property, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Gattens, I just, using the scale at the bottom, and I just kind of made a crude ruler, it looks like, as you see, it gets narrower as it gets to the street.
Yep.
At the street, it looks to be approximately three feet, and as you get farther up, it hits four and then goes maybe to five at the widest part.
That's all I'm looking for, is to try to get an idea of where we are, you know?
Let me ask you this, the, Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry?
How high is the retaining wall?
Approximately three feet.
Okay, so if the retaining wall is three feet high, then any cars pulling into there, the lights would shine into the retaining wall as opposed to the next-door property? Is that what you're...
Yes.
What you're telling us?
The lights, the lights against the retaining wall would shine against the wall, not against the house.
Why would they be parking?
This is where the parking plan is here. They're parking against the wall. Yes.
They could park this if they wanted.
Okay, and then the retaining wall doesn't go all the way back, so that fourth spot doesn't have the retaining wall to block the lights, but at that point, Mr. King is telling us it's at the four to five feet. Am I right?
Correct, yes.
What's your, Don, is that what you, what you measured?
Yeah, it's more than four, close to five, I would say.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to give testimony on this case?
Sit down, right?
Yeah. Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Robert Petnato, fourteen, ten North Sumner Avenue.
Gerald Fabricator, fourteen oh one Church Avenue. Gerald, spell your last name, Gerald. Last name? Fabricator. F-A-B-R-I-C-A-T-O-R-B. Fourteen oh one Church Avenue.
Okay, we know there's a parking issue. We know that...
Did you flag a wall up here?
Yes, we know there's a parking issue. The street is definitely filled with cars, there's no room on the street at all. So if they can't accommodate whoever's going to be in that property, these cars are going to spill out into the street. And right now, they're, everybody's fighting for parking spots.
Well, according to these drawings, just so you know, we can give you a copy here, it's a piece of half a, half a spot short, which is really one spot short, just so you have an idea.
Okay, so basically, they're saying there's room for how many cars?
Four.
Four.
He's required four and a half.
Four and a half. Here's the thing, no, for one thing, there's also a lot of runoff from that property, and if they add more pavement, there's going to be twice as much runoff. We get inundated across the street when we have heavy rains. I get, my whole front yard gets filled. I end up with about a six inches of water in front of my porch. If, like I said, if there's more added pavement, there's going to be more runoff.
And if I may interject, just for the record, it's not just that four-unit house, there's the house behind it.
Behind it, too.
That's two more units.
That requires parking.
That park there all the time.
Right.
I mean, so you're looking, it's, and the street behind, the alleyway behind the house, I have a picture, I'm going to present it to the board, it's so narrow, a car can't get through it, never mind, so it's, it's not adequate even for any type of, you're looking at six units.
Mr. King, excuse, one side, the parking here, did you know how, how many square feet this paved parking area is going to be? Because if it's over a certain square footage, you're going to have to have some kind of water detention, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't believe this is enough that would, it's five thousand square feet, so that would be half of that whole lot.
Okay.
If I may, it's approximately one thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Thank you. Dan, the house in the back, we're not really here for the house in the back, is that correct?
No, that...
But that's part of the property.
I guess what, my question would be, in the house in the back, is it a single family or a multifamily?
That is part of the property.
It is part of the property.
Right, right. Mr. Chazen is selling both houses to this man.
Right.
Not one, it's, it's the whole package deal.
So you would accommodate parking, take, accommodate parking for both, both units?
Wasn't there parking in the rear off of that alley for that house?
There, there may be one parking space back there off the alley.
I have pictures to show you.
Yeah, you can, you can submit them.
And basically, nobody's really been upfront with the, with the neighborhood on what the use is of that property. I was approached by the person who said they're going to be the property manager, and he told me that each apartment is going to have four unrelated people in each apartment. So that's a potential of twelve cars, right there. It just, and I, he also said he was still going to try for four units, even though if it gets passed for three. What they want to turn it into is going to have a big impact on the integrity of the And also, the guy who said he's the property manager, he had made some retaliatory threats towards me, because we were here going against this whole situation, and I confronted him about it, and he, he admitted that he made these, these threats. This is, and also, there's a school a half a block away, you have all these people going in and out of this house, it's going to be on a monthly basis, weekly basis, you're going to have people going in and out, we're not going to know where our neighbors are. It's just, I don't think it's an ideal situation for the neighborhood.
But what is the ideal situation?
Have it residential, not...
A two-unit residential, and I'm hoping that that's something that even zoning could look at. Four unrelated is a lot in any neighborhood. If zoning could look at maybe down the road, a three unrelated, which would make more sense.
That has to come from city council, like we really have no...
I'm sorry, Mr. Gattens?
That has to come from city council, they're the ones that make changes.
Right, well, that's something that maybe zoning could bring up to city council or something, because, I mean, like, come on, when you're doing four unrelated, it's strictly fee for money, it's profit, that's, that's a business, it's not, it's not a residential...
It's going to be like a revolving door of people going in and out of this house.
It's not monthly, there's, you know, it's weekly, but, you know, and that's something.
And no in-house supervision, from what I understand, and then...
Take a look at his history, give it to him for the record.
Yeah, I know the last time he was here, he said he owns more properties, and how well he takes care of them. Well, I don't know if I can approach you with this, but he's got a total of over nineteen thousand dollars in delinquent taxes and refuse fees on his other properties, so we're going to add this to his repertoire. I mean, I mean, this is really taking advantage of the City of Scranton and those taxpayers. I don't know if you'd want to see this?
Yeah, give it to them for the record. I mean, you could take it for the record in the pictures.
Dan, I don't know...
Mr. Smith has to get it. He needs to look at it.
And could you come up and explain to these gentlemen what your plans are for this building?
Me?
Sure.
He needs to be sworn in.
Sure, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
Yes, sir.
Name and address.
Dennis Rodowitz, forty-four Vanderbilt Avenue, Babylon, New York, 11702.
Okay, well, and these guys are hearing a lot of rumors of what you plan on doing with this property, we'd like to hear it from you, what your plans are.
Okay. Initially, as a legal four-family, which it was for the better part of twenty-five years, I understand, was to put four units, two professionals in each one, which is just a, no children, it was just supposed to be a husband and wife, times four units, one car in each unit, and that was my, that was my plan, right from the beginning. I was denied the four unit because, as I understand, it was condemned for more than a year, so grandfathered back to an R2, if I understand. So we were applying for a three-family, and we're doing the same thing. We're doing, we're going with professional people, young up-and-coming, up and peop-, young up-and-coming people. We're not doing anything that's not in, in the neighborhood now. I've heard, I don't know, they're saying about threats and everything else with property manager, there's no property manager on the property right now, because it's not my property. And as far as, did you say something about taxes? Pay taxes, I pay my taxes every year, whether it be I pay it early or I pay it late, my taxes are all paid and all paid in full. When I, when I pay them, I pay them.
I think they're concerned you're going to be running this like a rooming house, I think is what they're concerned is.
It's not going to be a rooming house. I would not do something to this neighborhood where I wouldn't live next door to it. Not going to be anything like that, and I don't know who's, who the tool determine, I'll determine who moves into that house, because I can't go with four units now, from a financial perspective, it's a little bit a hit on my end, but I'm fine to move forward with three units, which was previously offered to me, but because it was a, because it's been a unit, a four-family unit for the last twenty-five years, I fought for the fourth unit, but now, as far as a three unit, I'm okay with that. I figured it out where I could make the house go forward. My plan was to put a better part of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment into the house to bring it everything up to code where, like I said, it was condemned previously, and I'm, my plan is to go forward with it.
You said that you want to put husband and wife with no children, one, one car?
I don't want children in the house, I do not, and everybody will be, because last time I was here, you had asked me about the four and a half cars and the six cars. Each unit will only have one car. How I control that?
Well, you're going to have a hard time with that, because all the people I know that, that are married, they have a car and their spouse has a car, so that's two cars.
Just to give you an idea, my rents in my, my homes in Scranton is usually between fifteen and twenty percent less than the average rent in Scranton. I have a large application, and I, I choose who lives in that house, not my property manager, not my contractor, not anybody. So I'm the one who chooses, and part of that is to have one car per unit. So that's how I control, that's why I have no issues with the City of Scranton. I understand the whole thing about people having two cars, if you have two cars, you will not be allowed in the house, it's as simple as that.
How are you going to guarantee that? Just, I mean...
Because I won't allow it.
But what if they say they have one car and they lock it?
Well, then they, they're not the perfect fit for me, as simple as that.
But you, you're still not going to know either way, that's my point.
Yes, I will control it.
They could tell you, they could tell you, just like you're telling us, you want people with one car, they can say, I only have one car, and then, because you've told them that they can't move in without it.
Then they'll violate their lease term, they'll be, and they'll be evicted.
Well...
It's in every single one of my houses, that's in the lease agreement. I'll be more than...
I'm just saying it's going to be a hard task to find a married couple with only one car, unless they're elderly.
Well...
But even my elderly parents each have a car, so I, I don't know.
That's fine, that's part of the lease. Like I said, if they violate that, they'll be evicted, that's part of, that's part of the lease agreement, one car per unit. So actually, in this unit, going with a, going forward with an R3 application, there'll only be three cars. I won't need four and a half spaces, but my intention, for, for legal purposes, and what it's going to cost me to put, whether it be a French drain or new pavement on the top to accommodate the City of Scranton, that's exactly what we'll do to accommodate.
Can I also ask you another question?
Of course.
You're here, like, this is your fourth or fifth time here, and you didn't, every single month that you were here, I had a, I made that same spiel at the beginning about how the applications are incomplete, and yours was always one of them, and it was still incomplete, we didn't get this until today, so...
Why would that be incomplete, then?
Because you don't have a parking plan.
I had a, I hired a survey to do that parking.
Yes, but you're here, this is your fourth or fifth time, and now you come with something at the meeting, not beforehand.
Well, because you asked me to accommodate.
At the meeting.
And when would you like me to hand it?
The day that you filled out your application, however many months ago.
Okay.
That's, that's the procedure, I just...
I wasn't aware of the procedure, I apologize for that.
Well, I mentioned it several months ago, so...
Okay.
Is there anything that would make you guys feel more comfortable with this? Any questions you can ask in the field?
Yes, I have more.
Okay.
If I may approach?
This is a universal edition, I would give it to the neighborhood, everyone saw, saw, signed, looking for a two-story residential.
I'm going to object to that, they could be here today to argue as well as this gentleman.
Yeah, that would...
I'm going to ask you to take that microphone that's on that table over there and bring it to the, no, the one that's on the...
I can share mine.
Yeah, and there's also that one over there.
Dan, did you say no to that?
You can't present a petition if people are not here.
I'm telling the lawyer, you can, you can get that microphone that's right there in front of the podium and put it on that table.
He said we can't accept those, our attorney said we can't accept them.
The table, that table.
Because of the objection, you can't.
And this is just for the, the record, I took pictures of the problems with the parking on that street, you could see that the upper block from his house, the tree is out on the road, and there's... And there's no parking from here up, which is halfway up his side. And if you look at it from the other perspective, on the other side of the tree is a no parking zone because the street is so narrow right there. So that eliminates about 25% of the parking on the street to begin with. This is the property, this is the property that we're talking about that's behind the property that they're talking about. That's a part. And you could see by this that, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. You could see by this that I tried to drive through the alleyway, and I couldn't get my car through it. I'll scratch on both my sides. So going through the alleyway is not an option.
And again, I'm just gonna object to this actual picture and why we're talking about this. That property is not condemned, that use is not in question. It may be on the same parcel, we admit it's on the same parcel, but it's on the other side of the property. It has its own access.
And I would say that whatever use is made of that house is grandfathered in because there's no change to that house.
Thank you.
And these are for you. And again, this is just for the record. This is the type of maintenance that is taken care of in the property. The front of that house at one time was all stone. And if that's the way they're gonna take care of the property, this is what we're dealing with. And all of our real estate values are going down because of the way the property looks. And there's another picture of the property. Okay?
It's, I mean, I'm not, it sounds like the gentleman wants to make a pretty big investment there. I'd hate to see the property sit there empty also.
No, this is what happened to the property up the street. This woman here, it was a four unit. It got raided, a man got picked up for attempted murder in the house. They were making crack cocaine in the house. It was condemned, and it was closed, and she was only allowed to use two units now. I can live with that, two units versus four. Because now, the amount of flow is not going through, and the one side is still condemned. But she had basically opened up. She's turning it into a second chance house too, she said, because that's where the money is. She told me point blank.
Again, we're not here to be another house. We're not trying to turn it into a second chance house.
But I just wanna show you these pictures. This is six houses up from that one. And both of these two houses are within 120 yards of the public school.
All right. Take that one, please.
So it does look like there's some multi-use property, or some multi-residential properties on the street?
So we already talked about the parking problem. We talked about the distance from the school. We talked about property maintenance, which is Mr. Petnano brought up about the taxes in the rear. The prior petition that we threw out. Issue of it being a business versus an income. And the issues of the narrow streets, the water runoff. I think I, so I guess that's all we're hoping is to give the North Scranton a chance to purely keep it residential. That's all we're trying to hope for. You know, try to keep the neighborhood up. There's only one or two houses that are, have been problematic, and we're just trying to boost it up a little bit.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
He said he wants to make this basically residential, a husband-wife. Who's going to monitor that and make sure that's what it turns into?
I mean, if you had a problem, you'd have to call the city, and they would have to come out and...
Yeah, we really can't put conditions like that on it because this gentleman may do that for six months and turn around sell it to somebody else who might not do that. You know, so we have to, the board has to consider, not this owner, but all owners, all future owners, and what they might do. So it's really the use that the board has to look into, not the individual applicant.
So if you had an issue, you would call the zoning officer, or if there was another problem, you would call the police? You know, if there was a major problem?
Yeah, I understand that. I was just wondering if anything would be monitored as far as even, even as far as adding to the parking and the runoff? If that's really gonna be taken care of?
If that house is condemned, he's gonna have to go through a pretty vigorous inspection process to get that house back up illegal again. There'll be a lot of inspectors going through that place.
So there is no rules then if this, if it's turned into a, what's called a sober house?
He's not allowed to do that.
He's not allowed to do that?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I don't know if you wanted a copy of the taxes and stuff?
Mr. Smith, any, Mr. Smith, any objection?
I would object to the relevance.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that wants to give testimony in this case?
Oh, boy.
Whoever is next. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Don Galenas, 1426 North Sumner Avenue.
Thank you.
Need him to spill his, spill your last name?
Galenas, G-A-L-E-N-A-S. I just have one thing to add to this. Obviously, Mr. Fabio Cattor and Petnano hit on a lot of it. He said he's going to regulate who lives in the house. Federal law prohibits that. He can't say who can and can't live in the house. He might want to, but he can't. It's against the law. So I don't know how he's gonna prevent anybody from, oh, yeah, there's only two of us and four or five people moving in, or, oh, we only have one car, and next thing you know, they have two, or, oh, we needed a second car. He lives in New York. He's not gonna care. It's his, his housing managers are gonna take care of us, if he cares. So I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. You can come on up. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Linda Hughes, 1417 North Sumner Ave. I live right next to that property, three feet away. I hope you guys change your mind because whatever comes to, either if it's a three-family or a four-family, it's still gonna be used for the same amount of men coming there, you know? And we can't have that in our neighborhood. There's too much going on. I lived there 28 years, and I just wanna live there in peace, you know? I guess that's about it. I just wanted to say, please.
Just so you know, he's here for a three unit, not a four unit. Three units, he's looking for three units.
It won't turn out like that, trust me. He already has nine rehab places in the city. I think that's enough. He already has nine sober houses. So I think he can drop this one and just work with the nine that he already has. Because we really don't want that. We can't. In the last 10 years, it's nothing but hell. My nerves are shot, the neighbors' nerves are shot, and they're just bullcrapping you. The house in the back, they wanna make for women, so there'll be all women back there in the yellow house behind that one. So we don't want this, because we've already had child molesters there in the house. We've had all kinds of drug people, everything, raids, and I just can't live like that. We own our house now, and, you know, we just wanna live in peace.
Thank you.
All right, would you please give it some consideration?
Absolutely. Thank you.
You know, we pay taxes there and stuff, so please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have Dennis for some rebuttal testimony to answer those questions.
I just have a question, actually.
Thank you.
Just for the record, to clarify something, I would say, do you operate sober houses throughout the city?
One.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dennis, how many properties do you own total in the city of Scranton?
Five.
Does every single one of those properties have its own property manager?
Yes.
Yes, can you talk a little bit about how you maintain your property since you do live in New York?
I have a full-time property manager. I come up twice a month to make sure everything is, is fine. And I never have a problem on my properties. I just don't. And as far as what the gentleman was saying, is I can't control who comes in the house. I do control who comes in the house, whether it be legal or not. I bring no, no harm to my neighbors. Like I said, I would never bring someone in who I wouldn't live next to. And whether it's, I determine who goes in that house. Whether, and again, I keep it to usually couples and one car. Whether I'm breaking the law or not, I'm breaking the law then. As far as the problem on someone with all the parking, if every family would have one or two cars, it'd be fine. You can't blame me for the problem on Sumner Avenue with all the cars. There are houses on Sumner that literally have four cars in their driveway and two in front.
Do you have any intentions in trying to run a sober house or any kinda...
My, that's not more, that's never my intention from the beginning. I have a sober house, I think, in the west side of Scranton. I'm not quite sure if it's west or east. And I have no problems with the neighbors over there.
So you say on the record that this is not gonna be a sober house?
I'm saying on the record it's not.
Thank you.
Could you also guarantee that you won't be back here at any point in the future trying to make it a sober house?
I have no intention.
Jerry, do you want to add something?
Yeah.
We have some minor testimony from Jerry Chaven.
Sure.
Thank you. Jerry, go ahead. Go ahead, would you like a sec?
I've been the owner since 2008. In the last, well, a lot of the people are here. Did I put money in that house from where it was before?
You gotta talk into the microphone, sir. You gotta talk into the microphone.
Jerry, I need to talk to the neighbors.
I would like to ask the neighbors if they can affirm that I put money into that house, and it was the nicest house on the street. I'm sorry?
All right.
Jerry.
Jerry, you make that statement.
Excuse me, I didn't ask that question.
Sir, we're not here to argue or talk to the audience. You're here to talk to us.
The back house has a street where a lot of traffic goes to the school. That has got so many potholes, it isn't funny. Out of my own money, I took a third of that block because I felt bad for the neighborhood because the city wouldn't do it, and I repaved it out of my pocket. Anybody that wants to go on Geraldine Avenue Street can take a look. That I repaved it, because you'll see there's a part that's repaved from the front to where my house ends and the rest of the street.
So we're not saying, we're not saying that you haven't put money in your house or anything, but this testimony has something to do with what we're doing right here tonight, so... If you can add, I'm not done. If you can add something to the testimony tonight that we was giving on this gentleman, his intentions with that house, the parking, please do it. But I'm not here to listen to what happened in the past. I'm here to listen to what's happening right now, so...
I asked Dennis, because it got back to me, because I had a meeting with Bobby when he found out I was gonna sell the house. And we had a, we went to Fratelli's, and he told me he had heard that it's gonna be sold and turned into a sober house. And I said, "What are you talking about?" And he said, "This is what he heard." I called Dennis up immediately, and I asked him, "What is your intentions with this house? I have been here for 10 years. It is true, I may not live there, but I have been on that house and on that block 10 years of my 70 years. I have put a ton of money into that. When Linda, who was the lady who came up here, asked me to put people in that were friends of hers that had no place to live, I did that. I did it six months ago. She stopped paying rent three months ago. She had no place to go, and I had an empty house. So I let her live in the first house on top, which was not condemned. Linda, and I don't know about the other people, but I know Linda, if you check into their histories, they've got some checkered histories. So if we're gonna take testimony, let's call a hen a hen, a chicken a chicken, and a duck a duck.
All right, sir. All right, sir. Let's wrap it up, so we can move on. Thank you.
And let's be honest, Scranton is not golden white. We do the best that we can, but let's be honest. Teresa, whatever her name was, asked people to come here 20 years ago and kill this friggin' city.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanna...
If I could just sum up some of the concerns, I think I'd like to at least try. So you saw the parking plan. There is an additional 900 feet we're adding, but we're well under the 5,000 square foot impervious surface to, that would bring us some stormwater management plan. However, I heard that, you know, excess runoff, we'd be, you know, definitely working with the city engineer, going through the condemnation process through, make sure that we add a proper drainage. We have a lot of room on that site to work with for, you know, catch basins, French drains, grading down back toward the pervious surface, not the street. We'll definitely do that. We're not looking to create any additional runoff. And you heard Dennis's intentions on what he's doing with the property. And I just wanna, you know, regardless of the people living there that was discussed, I mean, we have four spots, you know, 4.5 are required for our request. So we're very close. It's not like we're asking for, you know, a major reduction in parking. I mean, we're almost there. And Dennis wants to use this property for a positive use, you know? He wants to clean it up. He wants to put money into it. He wants to make it a productive property in the area where I think the neighbors would actually understand and when they see what happens, wouldn't hold such a dark light to it. And, thank you.
Don, this, the front house that we're talking about, is the whole house currently condemned?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay.
It is, yes.
So does that revert back to a single or two-family?
Revert back to a two-family, as it has.
So right now, it's legally already a two-family if he gets it uncondemned?
Correct. If he brings it back up.
So we're looking for one more unit besides?
Yes.
So he wouldn't have to come here for permission for the two units? He's already, would be granted that?
Correct.
I'd like to add some conditions onto this before we vote. I'd like to see on that border wall some kind of shrubbery put, because, I mean, granted, it's three foot high, but when you come up that hill, you're coming in, your lights are going up, and they're gonna come into that, into the neighbor's house. Granted, when you pull up against the wall, you're gonna be there, but coming up that slope, you're gonna create, you know, an angle, the lights going up into it. So I'd like to see that condition put in. And as far as the runoff, I'd like to see possibly that area, I think, if I remember correctly, there's grass at the top, and even some kind of retaining shrubs or anything up there that's gonna help divert the water coming out the back part of the private, the grass area is from flowing down that driveway. I think the only good thing that helps is that he does not have, and, Don, am I correct, he does not, does he have to pave this?
I'm sorry?
Does this, yeah, does he have to pave this driveway with the four cars?
Yes, if it's gonna be used for parking, it would have to be paved.
Just wanna be sure. So the condition that you do work with the city engineers and reach out to them and, I mean, see what can be done to try to divert that water to stop the flow.
So, Don, I think what Bob was trying to say is that the four spots could be paved, but could we do the turnaround and maybe a gravel area instead of more pavement? I think is what he was trying to, right? Am I right?
Yeah, yeah, trying to eliminate some of that pavement there.
Well, the paving is a requirement of the ordinance, so you certainly have the power to vary that.
Let me just look at that plan again. I'd be more concerned with just paving the... I, I'd be more concerned with just paving the parking spots and the driveway leading up to them parking spots, and, and then do like a, a gravel background up the top of that turnaround, to try to hold some of that water off the top, and let it permeate through the ground. I, I think if you pave, we have you pave that top lot, we're just adding insult to injury of the water runoff at that point. So the condition that I'd like to see put on this, is that the parking area, which includes all four spots, um, and go maybe a quarter of the way up into that, whatever circle was be paved, um, and then landscaped at the top of that, put bushes or something that's gonna help retain the water coming off that upper area. And then again, reach out to the city engineers to, to make sure that that paving isn't gonna cause harm to the facilities across the street, and that it's diverted on, angle the flow with the natural flow of that street. And again, and then the shrubbery against your neighbors there, to, to, you know, as a courtesy, that it's not chiming into the apartments there.
Does the rest of the board go along with those conditions?
Yes.
Kerry?
Conditions?
Yes, the conditions.
Yeah.
Mr. Morris? Okay. So any vote, any vote that you take will be with those conditions? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Chairperson, chairman.
Ms. Newcomb?
Based on my spiel earlier about in, um, sorry, applications being, uh, not complete, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on that.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Gadsden?
Uh, due to the conditions put on there, and his testimony that it will not be a sober house, and it's into the record, and that he will not come back before us again for another additional unit, I'll take him at his word, and that it's fact that it's into the, the legal record, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm gonna vote no. If voted three to one, you've been denied.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a quick five-minute recess.
Don't worry, you're the most important one here.